Hesitated to consider giving St. Dominic's consideration on there. Assessments, what was gonna happen is uh maybe St. Dominic's would balk. So then you're gonna have eleven point one acres with no assessment, cause we on it. And thirteen point acres with no assessment because the heat on it. So you're gonna go from one entity dependent assessments to no entity dependent assessment. So so they listened there. So they've agreed to take under consideration. Given St. Dominic's a break on the assessments that they would pay to occupy the thirteen point acres. So it looks like we're all going in the right direction. It looks like St. Dominic's has agreed to allow us to, without condemnation, go ahead and get in the bill considered this right away for eleven point one acres. And that they will move to the north, uh look more north, thirteen point one acres. With the same assessments maybe, and we would save half a million dollars. Thank you.
That's great. Good, good. Good report. Thanks, Mike.
Mr. President, I would like just to add last statement. There's a lot of moving uh factors in in all three of these phases. Bozeman Bridge, Interchange, widening of the of the interstate, Phase Three. And um it it seems, as uh Mike has said, all of it's going in a good direction today. Uh but we just still have to keep a, you know, foot down and and keep it in front of the people that can make the difference, you know, whether it's MDOT or elsewhere. And uh cause we still have a long way to go.
That's true, but it's a very needed project, so.
Yes.
We need to keep working. What do we have next? Think we finish up with those?
Sir, next on the agenda would be the consent items.
Consent items, okay. Is there one taking a look at the consent items? Do they have any questions? Any consent items you want to remove? All in favor of the consent items?
Aye.
Okay. Business items, James Allen of Harvest of Hope.
I've called for Mr. Allen twice. He is not here. So do you wish to take up this item? I do not have the details of it, or do you wish to move on?
Does anybody know anything about uh have they made contact with you attorney Espy or anything?
Have they made contact with you?
No. No contact to the attorney, sir. So Gary Haygood from the Haygood Group is next.
Okay then.
He is here to talk about uh the um finalization of the courthouse grounds project that we've been working on.
Okay.
Good morning, Board. Gary Haygood.
Good morning.
I wanted to just give you an update on where we are. I hope that y'all like the way that things are looking out there.
Looks good.
Great.
They've done a great job. David Harris was a contractor and that's gone, it's ongoing very smoothly. There was a question two weeks ago, um or some time ago, I guess, about um the warranty of the sod and the flea market. The contractor can only mark, they can only warranty the quality of the sod. They can't control what happens to it after that. The sod is doing great. It's been in, most of it's been in for about ten days now. We've got ten more days until the flea market. So we're comfortable that everything's gonna be fine. We have met with Shelton to talk about um how to protect it for the flea market. So I've got some recommendations for you today. First thing is need to keep vehicles out of the square. It really should just be pedestrian access only, maybe small wagons or whatever. That concrete is built six inches thick with lots of rebar in it to handle utility trucks and things because we know that that happens. But you really need to keep those kind of trucks out of there as much as possible, even after the flea market, just to keep the grass. When those trucks go across the grass, they're gonna hit sprinkler heads. We have concrete collars around the tops of the sprinkler heads. Be minimized, even if putting up wreaths and trees and whatnot. Maybe using smaller equipment would be helpful. Um the con- the irrigation heads have been marked with paint so that everybody will be made aware of where those are. They can see them. The concrete collars are up under the sod. So if you go out there, you're not gonna see them. They'll be installed this week. But they are there to protect the heads. So we mark them so that everybody can see where they are and hopefully stay off of them. The irrigation will be turned off after Tuesday night watering so that the grounds are not soft. And they'll run again that Thursday night of the flea market. So we'll have the hard, the ground as hard as it can be. It's gotta stay wet now to get it rooted in properly, but um we'll be managing that. And um I think that's pretty much it. Y'all, well, one thing I wanted to say too is that we chose Palisade, Georgia for the project because of, mainly because of the shade tolerance of it. We've got those giant trees. We put a lot more pine straw in there because the nothing's gonna grow underneath the oak trees. So spray those lines out. So I feel like where we have the sod, it'll grow. But it was also chosen due to its resilience to traffic. So I think that um that'll serve you well, having it in the square. Y'all have any questions?
I I would just like to say the, I mean, it looks great.
Great. Glad you like it.
Done a good job and and it just made a world of difference of the appearance of the courthouse.
It really did, yeah.
Mr. President, I would like to ask Shelton though, uh who who will uh? I know the flea market's coming up and and we definitely want to continue to have the flea market and for it to be successful. But uh some of these suggestions as far as staying off the ground, um who? Are you gonna oversee that or who will oversee that area?
I would ask that the board pass an order with those restrictions, if if you are comfortable with that. Uh and then we'll take care of enforcing that board order.
Yeah, I don't see the restrictions on the agenda.
Right. This was a discussion today. The only thing that I'm asking you for today is for permission to uh advise the flea market vendors to not use tent stakes uh to to secure their tents. And at the next meeting, I will bring back, after we've had exposure to the flea market and we've seen kind of what uh what goes on there with with the uh improvements that have been made, then I will bring back to you a couple of more restrictions, like preventing vehicles. The flea market does not put mo- motorized vehicles in the square. They only use non-motorized uh two-wheelers and uh and wagon type uh carts. We have bollards in place that are locked to keep trucks from going up on the square. So I think we have until the next meeting to put that together, other than I I wish to be able to say no tent stakes.
Mr. President, I'm gonna I'm gonna make a motion to County Wires open a little bit to give Shelton the authority to meet with the flea market committee in general to let them know what is required of using the courthouse grounds. And that is as a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that very generalized motion?
Let me, let me uh ask the question, uh or make a statement. Shelton, if the request, and if this motion gonna include uh no tent stakes, we need to make sure that the flea market people get that quick as possible so they can let their vendors know, or the vendors can come up with some other way of of getting their tent.
Anchoring the tent.
Anchoring their tent down.
Uh yes, sir. I have talked with the flea market committee. Remember, there is a group that manages the flea market within the fence. I can't tell you the name of it right now, but it's like the Canton Flea Market Square Group. I have talked with them on two occasions and I have told them that they need to not allow tent stakes because we don't want to damage the irrigation system. They pop that thing at seven o'clock on Wednesday night when they're setting up. I don't have a way to get anybody in here to fix it and they're gonna have water going everywhere. So I've I've told them, we need weights on your tents. I'm meeting with them tomorrow afternoon to emphasize the same thing. The the my request, though, is for you to support me in making that uh statement to them. So the vendors have already been notified at least once, maybe twice. And with, if if you approve that um that theory of no tent stakes, then I will have a couple of signs made to put at the entrance uh to tell the vendors no tent stakes.
Uh another question. What about just have, who's gonna be out there? Who's gonna make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do?
Uh the flea market group uh will be out monitoring the setup of the booths. Generally, county employees are not out there, but we can, we can make passes through uh on Wednesday afternoon once tents start being set up.
Will we have our new building of ground direct about that time?
Uh no, sir. He'll be here on the twenty, I think it's three weeks from today.
Shelton, the.
But I can, I I mean, I can get people out to walk around and make sure people know no tent stakes. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna pounding something in the ground and water coming out.
I think we all agree with that. And the reason I made the statement general is when you meet with them again, I'm sure that there's something that's gonna come up, that if we just pinpointed today, uh you know, you may, I think you have the authority to say.
Right.
No to it. So that's the reason I made the statement general is because we definitely do not want any vehicles on there unless it's approved by you or someone else, you know, within the county.
We've already met with the Christmas group too, uh and we've talked to them about hanging wreaths and using a lighter lift that's basically the equivalent equivalent of a quarter ton pickup as opposed to the large utility trucks that have been used. They are still looking forward to having the Victorian Christmas, but I am not, based on the comments they, based on the comments they have made, the fair type rides that were on the square last year will not be used again.
Right. Okay.
Sheriff, uh do y'all, you have anybody around the flea market? I see some deputies during the time of the flea market.
We generally have some off-duty deputies up there that work under the direction of the the flea market committee.
Oh, okay.
But we do have personnel that are that are there on the grounds.
So that that committee then can can.
And I'd be glad to relay to those guys that while they're up there uh doing that, that if they'll pay attention to that. So I'll be glad to pass that along.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay then. All right, I'm done.
Here's a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Wait up the motion. Do you?
Ryan got it.
Ryan got it. Well, Ryan got it, you know. That was pretty gentle. Okay, Tim.
First item I got for you is Rightaway Acquisition Agreement with Integrated Rightaway. This is for the Catlet Road Widening Project in the amount of forty-seven eight seventy-five. This is under their General Services Agreement of the county.
Wait, wait, wait. Forty-seven?
Forty-seven eight seventy-five.
With who?
Integrated Rightaway.
Tim, on this particular project, I know we give updates in the meeting, but can you get with uh, I get a lot of calls about this one. Can you get with Heath Hall and have him, give him the information, have him do a post, update the community on on where we are on this? And when do you plan to go to construction?
This has got a two thousand twenty-four funding allotment from the NPO with it, so it'll be at some point in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
And how mu- is that, how much money is that that they gave us?
I'll have to look. I'm not sure.
Do you know how much it's gonna cover of the project entirety?
I think it's sixty percent.
Okay. And will you give us a quick?
Stan is here. He, yeah, Stan probably knows these numbers a little better than I do right off the top of my head.
Good morning. Yeah, the total cost of the project's roughly around four. I mean, that's total cost, that's right away, construction, and we got two point six from the NPO.
Four million and then two point six from the NPO.
That's correct.
And when do you plan on going to construction, two thousand twenty-four?
Um, that's correct. That's what, that's where the funding's set up. Well, if we, if we're able to obligate it sooner, we'll see if the, if the NPO has the money to obligate it, then we can try. Um and we can push it forward. We're probably about like, I guess you were approving the integrated, okay, the right away contract. So that's the first step. We'll actually be coming with our maps and deeds contract next um, next board meeting. And then so the right away could probably take about a year, maybe less. And then we got utility relocations too. So we could, if the NPO has the money, we could probably, you know, allow, tell them that we're ready to be obligated and see if we can do it sooner, maybe in twenty-three. It's just gonna depend on the funding. Right now, like Tim said, you did say twenty-four, right?
I did.
So that's where the money's set up for.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item I have is permission to work on private property. There is a tree stump blocking a ditch that's at uh in between seven forty-one and I believe seven forty-three Ratley Ferry Road. We'd let the road department go over there, clear that out, which will reduce the flooding there on the right away.
Can we get a motion on that?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item I have is the final plat for Autumn Crest Subdivision. Uh this is roughly twenty-seven acres with sixty lots. A letter of credit has been received for the final wearing surface.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. Last item I have is authorization from the board to advertise for a pedestrian bridge at Sulphur Springs. Uh this is not a huge project. It's gonna be around fifty. We're just not sure if it's gonna be over fifty or less than fifty, so we don't want to have to do it twice.
Okay. Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before you sit down, um tell us where you are on widening, um do we south of the roundabout?
The grading contract with Hemp Hill Construction began today. This is day one of their contract. I believe it's a seventy-five day contract. So they're not out there this morning, but their their time is ticking on it.
So you're gonna be trying to pave one month?
Depends on when they get done. We're gonna be ready. As soon as we see we're at a point where we're about a month out, we're gonna do a paving contract. And it, you know, it, it may be February, and if it's February, then weather won't permit, so it'll just move it back some.
So you're gonna have, I mean, like naked dirt out there?
No, the road will still be there. All we're doing is grading the ditches and the sides of the road at this point in order to accommodate the two-foot widening. We're regrading ditches and making everything drain. Basically, it's a two-part. What we typically do with a a full construction is we do grade and drain and paving all in the same contractor, but we were trying to save money on this one by doing two separate contracts.
Can you uh put us together an estimate on widening north of the roundabout?
Yes, sir. I'm working on that for you.
And, okay, all right, thank you.
Tim, when will you have the estimate on uh north of the roundabout?
It'll be this week.
But we should have it at the next board meeting?
Definitely. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item I have is number thirty-six, Joe and Regina Wall. This was a conditional use for a four-acre exempt mining operation located on Sulphur Springs Road, property zone day one, sent supervisor district five. It's approved by the planning commission on September ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Well, Scott, the one that uh questioned this, are they present today?
Are they present?
Okay.
Yes.
Uh I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, but I wanna make sure that uh you putting down some rocks or whatever you need to keep from bringing mud onto that uh onto the Suss Brain Road. And I request all this from all the uh dirt pits. If it need extra rocks, add them. Cause once you get that mud in that, in that road, it come a danger. And plus, people don't like washing the car. I don't like washing my old truck. So uh I'm adding it to that to make sure we put plenty of rocks.
Okay.
That's a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Next item's Quick Fill LLC. This was a rezoning from R-one residential to C-two commercial. It's the location off Old Canton Road, the old Deer Deerfield Mini Mark. Property was zoned R-one residential. It is in supervisor district five. Was approved by the planning commission on September ninth, two thousand twenty-one. And the petitioner is present. If you, the president, you wanna speak with him.
Uh, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item's Stripling Lake LLC. This is a variance on setbacks running Mansdale Village Drive. It's located at the northeast corner of Gluckstadt Road and four sixty-three. Property's on C-two commercial, supervisor district two. Was approved by Mansdale Livingston on September thirteenth and the planning commission on September ninth.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is site plan, Gluckstadt Park, Phase Three. So it's located on Dees Plaza, C-two commercial, supervisor district two. Approved by the planning commission September ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have a question?
Yes.
This uh Gluckstadt Plaza, Phase Three, whatever. Is that inside the city of Gluckstadt?
Yes.
I thought they wanted to handle all zoning matters. You're not ready yet or what?
I'm not sure if I can answer that. Maybe uh Mr. Vance can.
I mean, that's, that was a hair.
I did too.
Mr. President, when um Mr. Tresby and I last met with the city, they did advise that they had appointed a zoning committee. But at that time, they had not uh established a zoning department. And uh and we have not been advised otherwise uh since then. So it's my understanding. So it's my understanding the county would still administer this at this time.
Yeah, okay. Well, I was in a Zoom meeting just uh last week and the Home Auto Association group had. One of the questions was why were we still doing zoning in Gluckstadt? I said we 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 were told that they were gonna take about zoning, so we we stopped. So I guess I was not right.
We're currently still doing it.
Mr. President, while we own that part, I think uh the administrator is going to bring back some recommendations from the city. If I last correct on what they wanted to uh take over and what they did not. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So far, uh there has not been any information conveyed to me about their organizational plans. So I know that they have advertised for um some employees. And our last meeting was when they're ready to give us uh information about their progress, that they would uh, they would ask for a subsequent meeting. But at this point, there there has been no additional uh information shared by the city of their organizational plans.
And I and I'm glad you gave us that update because, Mr. President, I didn't, you know, didn't want developers or other people be confused who who is doing what.
Yeah.
And so I think you just set the record straight as of today until you hear from the city of Gluckstadt.
Uh now, when when we met, they were in the process of renting a building to serve a city hall and they were talking about, uh you know, remodeling, but you know, that really wasn't an issue for us.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Uh did we vote on that, the motion?
We did.
Didn't make a motion, I don't believe. You talking about on number forty?
Um, yeah, the, the number thirty-nine.
Number thirty-nine, you voted.
We did vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh next item, Tate Office Warehouse, site plans located on Kim- Kimball Drive, C-two commercial, supervisor district one, approved by the planning commission September ninth.
Second, your motion. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, Madison Fireplace and Patio, site plan for a new warehouse located at one thirty-five American Way. Property's on C-two commercial, supervisor district two, approved September ninth, planning commission.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh next item's a preliminary plat, Avondale Estates, is for twelve lots, located off Kearney Road and Moss Road, supervisor district five.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Take care, man.
Okay.
I got one item for New Business that I'll bring up.
Mr. President, James Allen has arrived.
Scott, Scott.
Who's that?
Me, I got a, yeah, Scott. Scott owned the parcels up in Camden at Lorne and Highway seventeen. Uh that month or so ago, we were talking about getting a contractor and clean that off. It's old bi- old store building, old house.
Yes.
Is it ready to be cleaned off?
It is ready. It's, you know, it's been approved by the board. I do not have a contractor. Uh one of them actually deceased in the process of me trying to find one. And the other one I reached out to uh has not gotten back with me.
Like, so you saying if uh Canius can work this into his schedule, he can offload his track hole up there and go to tear down his building?
Absolutely.
Okay. What about the parcel right across the uh street there from it?
The Sidney Davis property?
Yeah, Sidney Davis.
I would have to go back and look at the board minutes specifically on that one. I think they agreed to cut that one. Let me look at the board minutes and verify that the board actually voted on that one based on that. I can't answer that exactly right now. But I will look at it.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion that uh we authorize Canius to uh put these two parcels within his work schedule and first opportunity to get uh offload the track hole into that island old building.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Mr. President, I would like to make a statement and and I'm in favor of it for, by all means. But, and I know you would do this, but when you start talking about tearing down a building, a house, or this and that, just just make sure it's the right one. Just make sure it's the right one on the right property. But anyway, I'm in favor of it.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
The old store building, old white house right there.
I I will personally be present out there.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. President, returning back up your agenda, James Allen with Harvest of Hope Christian Center has uh has shown up at the meeting. If you wish to address that now.
Okay. Come forth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President and Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for taking the time to see me this morning. I do apologize for not being here on time, but it's so good to be back home in Canton. I'm still learning my way around and what time meetings start. I'm here to request that we be granted a tax exemption status for our church located at thirty ninety-one South Liberty Street, where we were uh formed in November of two thousand nineteen. We've since been operating there. We purchased a property from uh Property Works LLC in June, July of two thousand twenty. And uh because we are a church recognized by the Internal Revenue Service as a five oh one C-three faith-based nonprofit organization tax-exempt status, we're requesting that same status from the Madison County Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Mike gives.
Yes, recommend.
Okay. All, hmm?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item forty-three involves transfer of funds for projects at the Sulphur Springs Park. In two thousand and eighteen, the Board of Trustees at the Nurse at Home approved eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for use for projects to build a walking trail at the Sulphur Springs Park. Walking trail had many associated costs, including. Walking trail had many associated costs, including lighting for $350,000 and a footbridge for $125,000. As things have progressed, decisions have been made where these two projects are no longer necessary. The park would not be open in the evening, so we don't need lighting. And the footbridge costs are being, uh, paid for by other means, state, a state grant. So you don't need the money allocated for those two items. So we've been working with the nursing home council and they've agreed to allow us to transfer the $475,000 stolen ball fields at the park. And also to purchase exercise equipment for exercise stations around the walking trail. So this, this is consistent with the same purpose of encouraging physical and well-being and exercise at the park. So they've agreed to allow this money could be, to be diverted and transferred for other means, but we got to do it by resolution. So they've got to adopt, you got to request it by resolution. They acknowledge your resolution and they'll agree that the money could be transferred. And so I recommend this to be passed.
Okay, can we get a motion? Make a motion on this, approve this, uh, resolution. Is there a second? And I'll second it.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Um, so I know that the nursing home, Paul and I have talked about this a little bit. Um, but I know that the nursing home has, has excess, a, excess money every. So I, I, and I don't have any problem with what Paul's doing, but I do think that we need to rotate this through the districts. Uh, if there's something, you know, take turns, I guess is what I'm saying for the future. And I, I don't know if y'all will agree with me, guys, but that's what I'm thinking.
Well, well, this right here is old money. It's not new money.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Mike, where is the resolution?
It's on the agenda.
Yep.
It's downloaded. It's there. Look at, look at 43.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Mine says approve.
It doesn't have an attachment at all?
It does.
You need to hit refresh when I do. What are we talking about?
I ought to have the same. It ought to be there.
It was added to the agenda this morning. It came in over the weekend.
But, uh, you know, I'm in favor of the tours and swing sets and things, but as far as the ball fields, I'm not. So are you saying with this resolution that is all or nothing or, or what? Or does it have to come back in front of the board for approval? But when you start talking about ball fields, you, you, you go into a different, uh, category now because who's going to upkeep?
The board will.
That, that's correct.
Yes.
What is the cost of the upkeep?
Let me turn to Mr. Griffin. So what we're doing is they agreed to convey $818,000 for, for, for elements of a walking trail.
Right.
Two of those elements we don't need. So the board has decided to divert, to build a, a ball field and to, uh, place exercise stations.
The Nursing Home Board?
It's board.
We haven't decided to build ball fields.
Well, we, uh, what we simply asked it is the money that was in lighting. Uh, we're not going to put lights there.
Right.
Uh, we got grants to build a bridge. Uh, so that money is free. We just looking to add that money to another category of the park. And that we're going to be buying exercise equipment, uh, uh, when you're saying ball fields, you might be talking about a tennis. Ball fields is a big definition. So, yes, I guess the, the, uh, what you asked in here, it is, the motion is, uh, to send to the nursing home to approve this resolution that's in front of.
So the ball fields aren't going to have lights? You just going to play ball during the day? You just said you're pulling the lights out, right?
Yeah.
I guess my main question here is, what is the upkeep? Right now, we do not even know the upkeep of the park itself on what we.
Cut another grass?
Of what we have. Well, we have a full-time person up there.
Cut another grass?
So with that being said, I'm trying to just figure out what this resolution, because I'm, you know, I'm in favor for most of it, but as far as getting new things for that park, and we do not know what the upkeep is going to cost, uh, you know, I have a concern about that.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor Baxter, for your question, the lights that are in the original agreement are lights around the walking trail only. Okay, they were limited to lights on the walking trail. Well, the park, the walking trail is not going to be open at night for use. Therefore, there is no need for those lights. So the, the conversation about removing lights from the original agreement doesn't correlate with anything for the ball fields.
How many ball fields, what kind of ball fields, and when the ball fields have lights?
We, we're not talking about ball fields like in High Cop, High Cop Park in Ridge. We talking about country softball field. That would, that would require, if anything, a, a little striping of paint and mowing of the grass. Motion, Mr. President? Got a motion. Um, now, uh, uh, let me say, say this. It looks like we, we, we received, what, $818,580 in, um, 2018? Those funds have not been used.
No, right.
Okay. And what we're saying now is, okay, to utilize those funds, we need to change some of the categories that were being used in the previous, uh, resolution by the nursing home to hand it to us.
Yes.
But continue with the theme of, of, of creating, uh, health and wellness activity. That's basically all you're saying. So what you're trying to do is move this money to a category where we can use it.
For the same purpose.
For the same purposes.
In 2018, that $818,000 worth of specific things.
Yeah.
All based on an attorney general's opinion relied upon by the nursing home board that said they could do this. If, if their board determined that it was for health and wellness for citizens of the county.
Right.
So the purpose remains the same. Uh, two items of the unused money in the $818,000, we're trying to divert for the same purpose. In this case, ball fields and exercise equipment.
Okay.
And they need a resolution in order to, uh, allow themselves to be able to do it.
And how much money are we spending for the ball, if we do, you know, ball fields? And I know if we do ball fields, we got to come back to the, to the board again to vote on, on, on the construction of the ball fields and, and the equipment. The whole $800,000 has not been used or only a portion of it?
I think about $800,000, $600,000 remains unspent.
Oh, okay.
And where did the, where did the, where did the, the money that we spent, where did that go?
Sheldon might have to ask you that.
Okay. Because you know, when we, when we first set this up, the first, the first division was going to be between the city of Madison and your part of the county, you're correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I, I, I haven't talked to Mary.
The city of Madison portion is still there, but it's not in this cause.
Right. But I just want to make sure that Mary has done what she needs to do. You know what I mean?
I'm sorry, I don't know what the question was.
That's okay. I'm just thinking out loud.
You know, actually, and, and you have a very good point that you made, that it does need to reach out to the other parts of the county as well. But, you know, with this resolution, this being on there this morning that I haven't read, I'm going to vote against it just because of the ball fields and the lack of knowledge of what it will, um, cost to maintain the ball fields, because we are actually getting into some dollars now on that, on that park that we do not know the upkeep at this point. And so to me, I, I think we need to open the park, see what we have missed before we actually move forward and see what the cost is actually going to be to the county to maintain the park before we start approving and building other sections of the park at this point. So not against it, it's just that I just need more information.
I understand what you're saying. I think though, what we're doing here is just freeing up the money. Yes. We're not spending the money. We're not building ball parks because we can, we, we, we can make the determination whether or not we need to build a ballpark at a future date.
This is not new board money.
Yeah, this is just, well, all, all we're trying to do is change the category so that if we decide we needed a ballpark, then we can use the money. We definitely going to need exercise equipment. Yeah, the exercise equipment, along with stations.
The system is based on reimbursements.
Yeah.
This is, this is a reimbursable-based resolution. So if you spend on ball fields and exercise equipment, because you have to vote to do that, in the end, the reimbursement comes from the Board of Trustees of the nursing home.
Yeah, I understand that part.
Alright.
I mean, I clear, if y'all are willing to make the motion or the resolution to leave off the ball fields, I would be in favor of it. But when you include the ball fields without more information.
Then basically the, what you're saying then, uh, as, as a category itself, leave out the ball fields. Then you, what you end up creating though, since you're not really spending money with this resolution, you end up going back and, and doing another resolution that's a future date if you decide you need a ball field. If you don't decide you need ball fields, um, it's, it's, it's no problem. I don't see any difference though, uh, Supervisor Stein, I understand what you're saying, is to let it go as it is because we, uh, you know, doing ball fields is something that we'd have to vote on and we'd have to get all the information you're asking for before we vote on doing ball fields because ball fields do have an upkeep that goes on for the life of that ball field. And I agree with you on that. I, I think that, uh, that we ought to leave this motion as, as, as this resolution somewhat generalized enough though and go ahead and just pass it and move forward. We're not going to be spending any money on anything right now. Even the exercise equipment got to come back before this board. And we've got to, uh, to have the low, low bids and we got to know all about maintaining that because you put it there, you got to, you got to keep it, keep it up.
Correct.
So I agree, I agree with you 100%. We're just trying to move some, mu, move, change some categories on some money that, do we have this money or this money is still sitting over at the, uh, nursing home?
It's over there.
Sitting at the nurse.
They need this resolution approved by their board.
Yeah.
To, to allow them to reimburse us if you decide to do this.
Decide to do?
Yes.
Okay. Alright then. Okay.
And they've agreed to do it.
Well, we got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. What, what do we have on that? Three, two?
I believe it was two to three. Did you say no?
No.
Okay.
I'm not against it. I just think we got to get some more information so that everybody's happy here.
You hadn't voted. It's two, two right now.
I'm not saying I'm opposed, but there's a few things I want. Um, Sheldon, could you, and you might want to send this to all supervisor, I'm just curious how much we've, we've spent up there. I'm not saying I'm opposed to what we spent. I just want to know. I don't have any idea.
I don't have a number to give you today. I would have to look.
Not today. Just, just a, an overview in the future, maybe before the next meeting.
Okay.
Hey.
Insane.
The trees.
I'm just curious, before we go in first. Man, I don't know how much ball field costs. I understand what Carl's saying. We're not spending any money today. But how much, how many we're building, how much it costs and how much it costs to maintain in the future? And is it going to take, we've got one full-time person up there? Is that?
That's correct.
Is he going to take another full-time person? Or can that one person do all? I just need some, some numbers because I'm kind of just shooting in the dark.
And, you know, and also I think the resolution should include, uh, the rest of the counties as well. The rest of part of the counties. I, I think Supervisor Jones made an excellent statement. You know, and, and she's looking out for the city of Madison, which she should. But, you know, we have city of Ridgeland, we have town of Flora. And so I think if we're going to do a resolution, I think it needs to be good for the county, not just for one area of the county at this point. Um, so, anyway.
Yep, yep. I'm going to say like this here.
Do you abstain, Mr. Baxter?
Answer.
I'm going to abstain.
He's going to say.
It's two to two. Motion does not pass.
I'm going to try to answer your question, uh, first, uh, Trey.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, uh, if you got a question about, uh, what it going to cost to maintain the, the ball, ball fields? It'll cost like what you see in, in, in Ridgeland, uh, Freedom Ridge Park with the big nice softball field, the big old, uh, concession stand sitting in the middle of them. We're talking about a rural country softball field, uh, where mostly it's going to be, it's cutting of the grass. Uh, it, it going to be a minimum, uh, maintenance there.
Are we talking about one softball field?
Uh, two.
Two. Okay.
Right there together. If you drive by South Spring Park, you'll see the big open space right there on, on South Spring Road.
Now Carl mentioned a tennis court. Are we building tennis?
I didn't, I didn't mention that. I said that could be, when you say ball field, it could be considered as a tennis court.
Oh.
I just threw that in there. Uh, when, when Gerald got to talking about all over the county, you all taking this money too far. This was approved in 2018 for South Spring Park only. So we not talking about new money or different money. We were talk, we talking about the money that is allocated for South Springs already. So if you want to go in the future, uh, asking the nursing home for money, uh, for other areas, I think we go from there, not back up taking money that already been allocated for South Springs. So don't water the, 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 the picture here, uh, uh, of this here resolution about what, uh, you trying to do for the other part of the county. This is about one location, South Spring Park, because it's old money that was already voted for. The amount that the city of Madison got in this million dollars is still sitting over there.
And she hasn't spent any of it.
The city of Madison received $181,000 for sidewalks.
In the city of Madison.
That money hasn't been used either.
I need to check because.
But it's, it's not in this. This is only Sulfur Springs Park.
I, I think we understand that, Mike. I, I think we understand what we're saying. We just need to vote and move forward. Whatever the vote is, that's the way it is and let's move forward, you know? So, Mr. President, what is the vote?
Uh, the, the vote as it stands right now is two, two and one.
Abstention.
Abstention. Um, we can discuss the issue more or we can table the issue and bring it back up in the next board meeting.
Let's table it for now.
Well, let me clarify this first. I'm going to make a motion that we set a resolution, uh, asking the nursing home to approve, uh, us for using, uh, part of this money, the $350,000, I guess, for, uh, exercise equipment. Okay. So, um, you check out the ball parks and just look, we talking about the exercise equipment? Yeah. Just a portion of the money. Okay, is there a second? And I'll second that.
I just discussed that for a minute. How does that, how does that, uh, uh, how does that look as far as the monies that, uh, Sheila was talking about earlier? I mean, is that money still there or do we need to make a, do we need to include the resolution? And which we don't have the answer at this point, so I'm going to make a substitute motion to table this until the next board meeting.
What's your vote? Well, hold on a second. You said, if, if what money still in Sheila, what?
I'm going to make a motion to table it until the next board meeting, Mr. President.
So Shelton, um, it was originally 800, $818,000.
Five hundred. I'm warning this up, Sheila. That's all what he doing.
The city of Madison was guaranteed 181?
And it's still there?
No, no, no. It was a total of a million dollars.
Oh, okay. Now we're getting somewhere.
It was a million dollars.
Okay. And the city of Madison's is already carved out and not being touched.
They haven't even received it as yet either.
Okay. And then I'm just curious, is the ball field proposed? Ball fields are, and the workout equipment, is that the last phase? Have we built the parking lots and the restrooms and, and all that? I mean, is there more to be? Are we going to be here six months from now trying to find more money for something else?
There's a health center. There's a health center and a standalone restroom, a set of restrooms and a pavilion that is built. The walking trail around the lake has been built. The parking lots have been built. Right now, there, the things that I'm aware of that are still in the works are a walking trail and playground equipment around and near the health center. And then a second set of restrooms, which would be in the general vicinity of the area where these ball fields are considered.
I remember years ago.
I'm sorry, and a fence. You awarded a contract for a fence.
Did we hire an architect to do a master plan years ago?
There was a master plan done probably something like nine years ago. And then Wagner Engineering was hired, there's Tim. Was it a little over two years ago?
Somewhere in there.
Around two years ago, that did a topography plan that we've worked with.
Okay, were ball fields in the master plan?
Yes.
And then what was the total, what was the estimated cost of that master plan?
I don't know that we did a cost on it.
That would have been, I think, before Tim got here that that was put together. Okay, I don't, I don't know that.
We're over budget or under budget or, I mean, we're just kind of, we're just kind of building on a little bit here and there. We can, whatever, whatever we come up with money for.
I would say, just as I said, we're way on the budget.
Okay.
The budget that they proposed came here with that master plan.
Mr. President, again, I don't have a problem with many of these things and hadn't have and voted for it. But I do have a motion to table it to the next board meeting.